Hi, evening. I'd like to call, oh, thank you. Like to call the regular monthly meeting of the Salem Board of Education to order at 6:01. Would everybody please stand to pledge the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Gina, are there any other questions?
There are kind of added things to remember.
Okay, okay.
So that's new.
Yeah, yes. At this point, I'd like to open the meeting for public comment if there's anybody who would like to say anything or have questions or share questions or concerns.
I guess I have a question for my son. He's been diagnosed with depression anxiety. He's been on school for a year. I've been requesting a tutor. I'm just wondering why he's not allowed to have one. He has an IEP. I have a doctor's note stating that requesting a tutor for my son due to the depression anxiety. He has on medication. It's not really working, honestly. It's had adverse effects on him, so.
You know, we actually don't talk about specific students here at the board meetings, but that is something that, you know, we can, you know, refer you to somebody to speak about. And then if you have additional concerns, you could raise it with the board. But we don't, we don't talk about personnel and we don't talk about individual students. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
But I, I, I hope it goes well for your son.
Okay.
I should turn the meeting over to Mrs. Adams for discussion of phase two?
So you have a copy, so I previously shared with you some revised recommendations for the final scope of work to be included in the... So we're calling it phase two, but it was brought to my attention recently that it's really a continuish, continuation of the original project, so. But I think for sake of clarity, we've been referring to it as phase two. Based on some further consultation with our attorney, our financial advisor, who has been in touch with, you know, working with the bond council, we looked at some of the scope of work that we've been discussing and looking back at the original scope of work that was presented in the project. So the language is pretty broad in terms of the proposition. The scope of the work was defined in the newsletter, the project newsletter that was distributed in 2018. So that language was more specific to safety and well-being of students and staff. In particular, they did reference key items in the scope of the work, but the financial advisors, the bond council seems to indicate that those are just some of the key items and it's not necessarily limited to the items in the list. Administrative offices will be reconfigured to ensure there's an administrator at each entry point of the campus. So as we've been discussing, that did not initially happen with the secondary offices because there was concern that it, the money might be short for that, so it was held off on. And so also some of the ADA compliance items and upgrades to ensure ADA compliance in the building. So these, this list that I have for you is currently the majority of that we've been discussing. However, I initially had indicated maybe we leave off the high school offices in lieu of that West Side entrance vestibule, but it seems that really that West Side entrance vestibule really doesn't fit into this scope as much as the high school offices. And so my thought is, is that as it was proposed previously when we were discussing that West Side entrance is to upgrade the ramp. I talked to Mosaic and when they put this pricing in, I said, let's up, let's upgrade the ramp to be proper because there are some, some issues.
Tighten the door open a little.
Right, and it's, I think, I'm not sure if it's graded properly and there's a lot of corner, a lot of turns. So we discussed that it's possible that in the future, based on our reserves or some other items in the projects, that we may want to revisit that vestibule in another smaller project. So we wouldn't want to redo the ramp now and then redo it again. So I asked them to design it within that scope of being enclosed in a vestibule, so if we did want to do that, we would not have to redo that work again. So that's the estimated cost for the 209. My proposal, and they don't have it here, is what we could do then. Again, the, I think it depends on the interpretation of the bond council. I mean, we're looking at that vestibule as a safety concern in addition to that ramp and that ADA compliance. But my thought is that that might be the least important item on here in terms of what we're looking at, but we could include that as an add-on. And if we get in a situation where we were this time, that we were running below costs and we did not need to use some of the contingencies or maybe pricing goes down due to, you know, maybe a better turn in the economy, that we might be able to do that. So, you know, we could see if SED, you know, felt it was in that, within this original parameters. We could, we could have it all ready to go as an add-on and not go through something again. I, I think, you know, we had some concerns posed to us about the previous project and some of the communications we go along. I think that was something, in hindsight, those add-ons probably should have been included. You know, there should have been maybe some add-ons included originally, so we wouldn't have to go through this process. Because I think that is, it's not the norm to kind of do it in, in this fashion. But I, I think as, you know, we discussed previously, the opportunity for, for significant capital work is going to be very limited in the future based on our declining enrollment. And really, the next work that we do, really, we need to be focusing on our groups. And so, you know, we, we can learn, I think, from some of our maybe missteps in the process of how we've gone about it and, you know, do better with that in the future. But I think we want to take the opportunity that we have to finish these improvements. So that would be my recommendation. You know, and if, you know, so if the board has any questions on this, this work, if you'd like to change any of it, eliminate any of it, you know, what are your thoughts? What are your thoughts about maybe that add-on piece?
I think doing the add-on makes sense because it would be in the pipeline.
That's our next. It's almost prioritizing the project.
And then all of our safety, I think our safety is really in the near future. I mean, I guess we never know. But I, I, I think our safety will be significantly upgraded. All of our, that, all of our entrances will have double, you know, double lock doors. We'll have a receiving area on every entrance where we can vet people. That, that's in here, correct? It should be right here, number six. Breeze, Breeze Wick.
Oh, sorry. I was thinking about that element.
I was thinking that, yeah, me too. I didn't see that place. Thank you. Sorry.
Yep, that's number six there. So I think all of those, I, we've got all of our upgrades now with our security cameras are in, we're still working on them, but they're in progress and I think those will be complete in the next month or so. So I think, you know, for where we are with current technology and kind of safety upgrades, I think we should be in pretty good shape. We've still got some plans to add some blue lights to indicate lockdown outside. So I think most of our safety, our big safety capital work will be completed. And if not, we can look at that, whether or not we want to include that with the roof project, depending on our situation.
So in order to move forward, do you need just a consensus from the board about how to do that? Or do you need more, more actions or?
So this is what I learned, that because this is a, it's really the same money that was previously approved, we don't need action. Your action would come through the approval of the different contracts and/or change orders. However, unless it's required by SED. So SED may come back and say, we want board approval ahead of time. Did we, how do we set it up? Gina, do we set it up?
It was just a discussion item.
So we could formally then accept it again. Yeah, it's a little bit of a gray area, so I think, you know, we can note it in the minutes if there's a consensus or we can vote. It would be your...
Can I interject here? I, just because of the way SED is, I would recommend action. That way, if we were to ask somebody to do something like Mosaic and the invoice is dated today, but we do formal action in December, there might be a hiccup there, kind of like we did with the netting. So I'd say we should, if we can, I'd rather do action before we do any charges going forward.
Right, and again, kind of because this is an unusual circumstance, there is a little gray area. So typically, you would not ask Mosaic, an architect of any, you know, it could be, in our case, it's Mosaic. You would not ask them to draw up specific and detailed plans and budget items. Usually just do more of a scope and conceptual plans, which is what we have right now, conceptual plans. Typically, you don't do that until a project's been approved. And again, technically, it's been approved, but not some of these aspects, so it would, I, I agree. You know, Karen, good point. Thank you. I think it would be cleaner that way.
Are people comfortable with moving forward with an action, changes from a discussion item to an action item? So just a moment while we think about the language, just to, that, when we accept the vote.
So are we just making, I'm sorry, can you, are we making, taking action to move forward with them to provide us with the detailed plan and that with?
To send it to?
To send it to, right, is that what we're moving forward with? I just trying to understand the word.
Really move forward with the plans for these items. The only thing I would say is we don't have that add-on component listed here. I'm wondering if we should clean this up.
Yeah. Does that keep us within the timeline that Mosaic wants?
Right, I mean.
See it by January.
Ideally, they wanted to really have approvals by, for January to start moving forward with the process. So if we, if we clean this up, then we could have it posted and then have the vote.
Do the action item.
And do the action item for December and we can have that as an add-on here. So then it's clear that also we were approving the add-on item in case of, you know, the availability of funds.
Thanks for that. So we'll move back to an action item.
For December.
Yeah, I also think if we, if we add this as a discussion item, if we took action and could see this, you know, that we're not, you know, not following what we, what we posted.
Okay, and so, so we'll do that. And then also I wanted to just let you know as a, just a final thought about this is, I know previously there was initially a start to having kind of a page on our website that was detailing kind of the process and it seems to have fallen away. It just really has some of the initial proposed, the newsletter, the proposed item. And so what I would like to do is, once we start moving this forward, is having that be a little more, I guess, forward, well, forward on the, you know, initial, easily accessed. Maybe there's something that, you know, you can click on to go to some of that information past and or of our present work and then giving some updates over time. And I, I think where some of the questions have come up have been related to some items that were not completed from that original key items in the scope of the work. For example, the concession stand and/or the bleachers. And I know some of that at the time, apparently, but I don't know, it wasn't posted. But I'm understanding it was because the decisions were made before the merge decision for football and at the time that it was discussed that that may not, I don't know who discussed it, but I feel like we would want to be very forthcoming if we, if we, if we change something in this list moving forward. So I think if we could, we'll update that communication on the page and/or some update, some newsletter updates or something like that.
I think that would be very helpful. Where do we, where does the conversation with the historical commission come in? Before or after the action?
I think once we could get some, some more, I think we could give them...
It doesn't change the items. It just changes...
Right, after the action, I, after the official action, I think we could reach out to, so Mosaic will work directly with the state entity. And then our local Salem, I would reach out to them and we could maybe have someone from Mosaic come and sit down with them and go over the plans. And once we have some more details, description and/or updates, we could sit down with them and listen to their concerns before Mosaic gets too much into a certain design concept, I would think.
At that, move, you know, action for December.
So I left my printout on the computer, so I just, excuse me while I pull it up on my phone, my, my little list of things, so I don't forget any updates. Okay, so, very exciting. We were speaking about it this morning. Not this morning, before the meeting. So we had NHS induction today. It was a lovely ceremony. It was very exciting that we were able to return to our traditional induction ceremony in the afternoon and have our secondary students and our sixth grade also was invited to attend and came and participated and watched the induction. So we have 13 members, which was, from what I understand, a rather large group. So it's very exciting. Winter sports season has begun. I don't know if you were walking through, if you heard some of the action. We've had a good interest in the girls wrestling, so we've had...
Mine's...
I'm, I'm pretty as loud, so as loud as you can just give me an elbow when mine goes off.
Mine seems to still be working.
Right. Does someone need one? Yeah, you just have to keep, I think they just flash maybe.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So girls wrestling, I spoke with Coach Fran Hofer the other day. And so practices started on Monday and they have had eight wrestlers, girls wrestlers right now, and he anticipates 10. So he's very pleased with the turnout. They're all very excited and so I look forward to seeing them in action. So Mr. Moore will be here in December to give an athletic update for the winter season and answer any questions you might have about winter season or moving forward. So if you have anything you want to put on his radar, just let me know and...
I do. Do you want me to do it now or wait?
Whichever works for you.
So we have nine kids signed up for boys basketball, nine to 12. Nine. That is not acceptable when we knew that this was going to happen, the numbers were not. We have 11 on the team because there's two eighth graders that have moved up, but we're really just setting people up for failure when we do it like this and it needs to be fixed. And I just hate to see what will happen with other, you know, we don't have other sports that, I don't know what the softball numbers look like, and I just hate to see it be like this. We need to be ahead of it, not waiting until it's an issue.
Right. So are you suggesting that we're looking into merge or?
Well, I, I, based on nine children, yeah, I would say so.
But that's, there's no JV.
There's no JV.
There's one for modified varsity.
We have two 10th graders of, of, you know, per Joshua, so I haven't talked to, I haven't talked to Mark directly about it. But there's two 10th graders that are too old to play down from autobike, which can only do that for ninth grade, but they can only play basketball quarter. They're going to be on varsity basketball, like, we're just setting these kids up for failure and it's not fair to them.
We can definitely have more discussions and timelines. We're getting close to the timeline four, so we're just completing our paperwork for the baseball merge. I believe that's coming up for spring. I know there's been some discussions and I, and I'll double check with Mr. Moore and I can give you an update and one of my, you know, my updates until we get to the next meeting. From what I've been hearing, there's confidence and we have solid numbers for softball. But again, we'll take a look at that and I could have them present some of those to you. Just our spring numbers. They, we have not had much feedback. I know Mr. Moore has, has reached out a little bit and there isn't much interest in, in a track merge. Our track numbers have been low, but because of that, you know, you compete as a team. There's also that individual competition element and Coach Holcomb has been, because our numbers are smaller for boys and girls, he coaches them both together and then, you know, they have their separate meets. So not together, but at the same time.
Would it make sense, and this is just me bringing it out there, to do the family ID a season ahead? So that way you can look at numbers before these timelines come up for mergers and things. I mean, I know some of the seasons were already in those merge situations, but like when, when soccer season starts, should we open up the, the winter sports season? Because that just happened like two weeks ago. It hasn't been, it wasn't open real far in advance. Just a thought process. I don't know how we, I don't know how we judge going forward if we don't open that signup process up to know what our numbers are in the next season.
So that's something that we could talk about. The challenge with that is typically, even when we have shorter windows or closer windows to the season, we often don't have signups until, and a lot of kids don't sign up until even after it's closed. So baseball, every, every year, last year, we even thought, even with the merge, we didn't, we're going to have enough kids for the past two years because kids did not sign up until after practices already had started. And they were players who had been playing over the past few years and they just don't get... So maybe a survey.
PE class, like, who's interested in softball, who's, you know, like, just to get kind of a preliminary sign up of numbers so that you kind of know what you're looking forward into the next season. Because, because now, you know, now we need to be talking about softball, baseball. We're already into the winter season. There's nothing we can do about it, you know? So we gotta, we gotta be more proactive, I guess.
Right, I think it's almost time, right? Definitely more proactive. I don't have the answer either, but we definitely need to be more proactive.
I, I would say we haven't had a hard push or a very formal discussion about merge for basketball. I'm just going to speak loudly because my mind keeps dying. But I, I think that, so we have a lot of people who support merges and we have some people who are traditionalists and, and have wanted to hold out as long as we can. And I feel like basketball is really that sport where it's, it's hard, it's a hard discussion to have. And, but I, I do agree that we, we need to start having those conversations.
It's not really that hard a discussion to have, though, when we don't have JV and have it for two years. So we need to, you can't be competitive if you're not building a program. If you're not building a program with a modified varsity.
And that's the same discussion we had last year about baseball, right? And that was really what led us to move forward with having those discussions and yeah, I, I agree and I, I think I've, you know, said in the past that we want to give students opportunity to play. And if being merged gives them the opportunity, I think it's, it's important to discuss that.
What do the numbers, I mean, I guess my question is, like, what are the numbers for basketball, like, modified, look like so that planning ahead, like, you know, or is there, is there a big enough group of kids interested in modified so that when they move to a JV level, but then you're still short, I mean, I guess it doesn't really work at all? We have this gap of boys, it seems to be.
Right.
Yeah, of kids not being involved.
Right.
And it's going to take a while for that to, to, you know, come back. Because I don't think those kids that would have been playing, you know, if they had started two years ago, they would be playing. They're not going to start now. So you've got to build that back up.
And I don't know, and this is just my math, teacher mathematician mind, you know, to me is I don't know if anybody's really studied it. I feel like there's a, a small, I don't think it's a huge percentage, but you get a lot of kids that play modified and then often, often for a variety of reasons feel that they're, they don't go forward. So you do get a little drop in the numbers in my, I guess, my opinion of just my not really studying it, you know, I don't know what the percentage of that is. So, you know, I have a couple of kids that played last year. I said, oh, how are you going to play modified this year? We can play again? And I, no, not this year.
So definitely at that level, you got to really, they either get interested and we keep them hooked or they don't. So that's, that's the hard part about the modified level is you've really got to instill that love of the sport, I guess, is what I'm trying to figure out.
I will say that there, um, so we had Coach Parker and Coach Eastman were going to co-coach JV and varsity together, not having a JV. I know there's kind of discussions of looking at the coaching, you know, because we have three coaches in the, the coaching piece and they're all having a discussion with Mr. Moore of what, what that might look like now. If we'll still have co-coaches, if, you know, how that might work. Similar to baseball, we had to do a little bit of a shift.
Yeah, I understand.
So we may need to do that again.
Sorry, Julie, I didn't mean to totally take over your superintendent report, but.
No, I, that's why we, that's why I bring these up. And so it's important to know, you know, what, what you might want addressed in those presentations besides just having numbers. And I think knowing some of the questions you might get will help them be a little more prepared to, to give you some, some answers. Just real quickly, sports netting for our neighbor. It was approved by SED. I think I had mentioned this in passing, but it was officially approved and the equipment and supplies have been ordered, weather permitting, so there's certain conditions. I don't know all the details. Well, I don't know all the details. I think it's really more maybe if the ground is frozen or not. I'm not really sure of the details. I, right. So weather permitting, they do have it tentatively scheduled for mid-December. I did reach out to our neighbors and let them know that, right, it's only actually a few weeks. So it's crazy. It was just 70 last week.
It was 70 last week. This would be crazy, like.
So, um, so I have reached out to them and let them know whether permitting it could be mid-December or after the spring-a-thon, that we would keep them posted, but. And I thank them for their patience. They've been very patient. It's been a long process to get that from concept to approval. And it's just the nature sometimes of the approval process through SED, so. November is Native American Heritage Month and as you can see, though, we have, I don't know if you take a lockdown. We have our long houses in the hallway and I don't know if you've seen, Mrs. Hofer's been posting them on Facebook and kind of... and kind of highlighting them, so that's pretty exciting. So I did want to just remind you of that. I did, I will be sharing the link if you did not have an opportunity to read Ms. Ba, Executive Director Schneider's newsletter. It's come, he puts it out on Sundays, so kind of depends on timing. I think it's when you get to read it, Sunday afternoons. But he does have, I want to draw your attention to a section in there on taking action to support universal school meals. This is the first year since COVID that we have not had free lunch for all of our students. We are seeing in our district and I think they're seeing across our region and it sounds like the state, that there's a lot of struggle for families that are struggling financially with that lunch piece and/or breakfast, but are above the thresholds, which are, I think by many considered too low. So they haven't been updated in quite a bit. But there are letters on there. I will, in my weekender, I will send you out the link where you can enter your address, your name and address in a pre-populated letter that can be distributed to state legislatures, state legislators and the governor. And I believe that the governor is, I think there's going to be some type of forum down in Albany in the next week or so to address this issue, but it is an important issue. It's important, I believe, to our school community, the opportunity to have free lunch. I will also tell you that currently the cafeteria already has a significant unpaid balance of over $2,000 and we're in November. And the collection opportunities.
They haven't had to pay that for several years now.
Right. So I, I encourage you and I encourage as many people as possible to be able to send that, send that letter out. So I will share the link, or it is in the newsletter. Just a quick update on the school counselor. So we did have some recent interviews and again, did not pan out. I put a note out to the superintendents in our region to see if there are any possibly looking for an interim. Going a little bit of what we would pay someone in an interim role as a school counselor. It doesn't seem like there's a big pool out there. There are one, I think there are two people that we've gotten names for that we're going to try to reach out to and see if they would be willing, even part-time, even if we can't get someone five days a week. We do have a substitute, someone who's been substituting and, but has gotten another job but is able to maybe still come in and substitute maybe two days a week. So if we could get an interim, that would kind of maybe complete a week. But, you know, we're doing the best we can, we're working it out. Our counseling staff is working hard. We have a significant need, quite honestly, if we, if we could get a school counselor, I really am looking at, you know, do we still need someone even at least part-time in that social worker role? I think we're just struggling again already with significant attendance issues and a lot of, a lot of mental health and, and social emotional wellness. And, you know, being able to have, Francesca Telesco does a lot of our counseling that's mandated through I U Ps and that's, that's billable through Medicaid and she's really, her whole schedule booked up with that. And so being able to assist our school counselors who have other tasks, just with some maybe additional. What we, we had been able to do in the short term, we did have someone in for the, a full week, for a few weeks and really it was a great opportunity to really have our teachers, have someone to work with them on just some social emotional wellness in the classroom. And so I think those are things that we'll need to continue to keep an eye on. But there are, I know there's another district that's looking for a social worker and a psychologist. So there are just a lot of, a lot of needs out there right now to fill. So we're going to keep looking for a permanent guy for a school counselor. But we also may ask for approval of an interim. We're just looking at all the options right now. And I think, oh, my last piece, and I, we have this as a discussion item, but I just wanted to mention, so originally in my entry plan, I had talked about surveying the different stakeholder groups and sharing that information. And I know that I've, as I've been putting out for some of the forums, that I would share out some of those findings with you. But as I've told you, we've had a very small turnout. And so what I could do is I can collect some of those themes, but, you know, I would like to, so it's a discussion item on here about possibly working with a consultant to do some strategic planning and they could really reach out formally to all of our stakeholders through some, some very comprehensive survey beyond what I might be able to do. So I think this was my goal in November, to share out some of that information with you, but I'd like to really discuss more whether or not we want to really get some more comprehensive data. I'm not sure it really represents our full community at this point. And so that's all I have right now. If there's any other items you'd like me to give updates on next meeting, just something. I feel like I'm, I feel like morons now, you're not feeling it?
No, not at all. I'm feeling it.
Maybe just because I have to speak.
There's nothing, it's so uncomfortable.
Must be coming from this. All right, so any other questions from the panelists? Moving on to the consent agenda, does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? But I am going to ask that the minutes be removed. I wasn't here, so I can't, and I didn't, I didn't actually see the meeting, so I don't want to go down that one, so. So entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, items two through six. That would be the Treasuries Report, the Internal Paper Audit, Commission of Accounts, C I C report and the Surplus Report. Motion by Heidi, second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the October 19th regular board meeting as presented. Andrea, oh Andrea, I'm sorry. Second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
He was there either and he was not there, so.
Three zero.
Motion carried three zero. Thank you. All right, moving on to our committee report.
All right, so finance and personnel bit and we pretty much discussed what we already talked about with the capital project updates. And then we also talked about the budget timeline a little bit, so. And those are all things that we're going to be talking about or have talked about, so.
The curriculum committee?
Yeah, so we met Monday night. Just continued, kind of looking to see what policies curriculum related may need to be updated. And also just, you know, we're presented with some ideas to have a little bit more structure and process around curriculum selection. There's a really good example, I think, with, with the reading H M H, right? Yes. That was done, but just formalizing that so that when people are going through whether, you know, a new curriculum like that or even a new selection in an English course, that there be a little bit more structure around that so that you could have a, have a good background and reasoning for adoption or, or recommendation, just to make sure people are thinking about all aspects. So, yeah, that's what we heard.
No, we are going to reach out to several other districts to look at policies they have in place that's what we're working with.
And the policy committee met Monday night as well. We did talk about three different things. Next month, we are going to be considering an updated policy that covers tuition waiver for employees, school employees. So that's on the agenda for, for next month. We have asked the superintendent to explore other options for streaming our meetings and/or uploading or however we can do it to make sure that we're consistent and you can anticipate, you know, when those things are going to happen. And we did talk about the request to waive the certification requirements in our therapy dog policy. And it was very helpful. Mrs. Telesco was able to attend the meeting, so we were able to have a conversation. And I think what she was thinking was going to be created was a program that would allow for the development of therapy dogs along with having therapy dogs. But that is not the way our policy is written. Our policy is written specifically for certified policy dogs or therapy dogs, excuse me. And her dog is at least two certification levels away from being a therapy dog. She still has to do the canine good citizen, which is a, a preliminary one, but that has to do with how the dog is under the control of the handler. And then there is the therapy dog international certification for the dogs to, you know, to come into these kinds of situations. So we, you know, we know, we know she has a lovely dog, but we also feel that the art, the, the information that she shared for us did not raise to the level of wanting to waive, at least for me, the requirement for the certification. And it has to do with liability because at this particular point in time, her puppy is, is considered a dog. It's not a service dog, it's not a therapy dog. And if there were to be any, anything happening with that dog, we're, our liability would be quite wide. So it is the thoughts of the policy committee to recommend not to waive that requirement.
I think we tried to, tried to express as best we could that it's not that we don't want to have this program, you know, or have the therapy dog. There are just things that, that we need to make sure we have in order.
So we hope she stays the course and gets the dog, the certifications and certifications that are necessary for, for her to have her in school. We just, and, and thinking about it, and I did go back and look at the presentation that she made and she did say she would like to have the dog in, in school. But, and she referred to different programs in larger schools that have the ability to have an area, you know, they have, they have, to have that particular program where they can have therapy dogs and then sort of like therapy dogs and training. But we don't have that kind of capability, so. We do, the policy is written for certified dogs and it is the best practice recommendations from the American Kennel, Kennel, can't always get those wrong. Kennel Club, thank you, and, and New York State to have those dogs certified. And at least a year and a half, it will be fully available. So right now it is a discussion item. I don't know how people feel with, that this is something that we all want to move in December. It's an action item or how?
Having been involved with dogs for many, many years and training them for different levels, if the dog isn't even certified as canine good citizen, shouldn't be here.
And that's, that was the best practice that was given, so.
The sit-down, don't bite anybody, basically. I've got a dog at home that's canine good citizen, which I think certified by the state. And so if, if, if this dog's not even yet certified as canine good citizen, then I wouldn't want the dog in, in building with a bunch of kids around.
And I think she's pretty close to that one. Much closer than the T B I is obviously a much longer, more stringent process, but she's close with, with it, you know, making those, that progression.
And it's tough, she's a young dog. It's tough for the.
She's not yet a year.
Yeah, so it's, it's unusual to have a dog that's under a year that has recently certified as a dog.
She has a, there's a puppy, puppy certification?
Yeah.
Right, right. She'd done some, some. A class, yeah, who classes, they have to go through. The other, the other piece, and it's really not specifically being requested to be waived, but, you know, it's the question of the liability piece and the insurance piece. If the dog is not certified, are they then covered under, you know, if you're not a certified therapy dog, are you covered under some type of a rider for, as a therapy dog? So, you know, then that puts, you know, the liability is always on us, you know, as the attorney said, you know, somebody's going, you know, plain simple, somebody will, would, you know, could be sued if there was an incident. However, you know, ensuring that, that the handler has insurance as well, I think that's a, you know, we recognize them, it's a shared responsibility, not just on the school. But it was a specific request, written request to the board. So we didn't move the discussion item into an action item. Should we do the same thing with this one, put it on the, the December or?
I guess we did, yeah. It's not like we had a motion committee, so.
Right, so, I mean, it was, it was tough because it was so closely scheduled. We had the meeting on Monday.
Right, but you have to get your, your, so. Yeah, I guess we have to move to December for action.
Okay. So any other questions about the committee reports? Moving on to our action items in the area of personnel. Entertain a motion to approve the following substitute appointments. Georgiana Hamilton is a substitute nurse and Mikayla Muschinsky as a substitute teacher aide and teacher. Motion by Dan, thank you. Second by Andrea. Any comments, questions, concerns? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the following coaching appointments. Brendan Holcomb, Boys at Varsity Track and Brendan Holcomb, Girls at Varsity Track. Motion by Heidi, second by Peter. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion five zero, thank you. Entertain a motion to accept the following resignation. Terry Tucker, teacher aide, effective October 21st, 2022. Motion by Andrea, second. Second by Heidi. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the following teacher aide appointment changes. Michelle Wren, changed from full-time 611 teacher aide to part-time teacher aide, effective November 10th, 2022. And Joan Moffett, changed from full-time regular teacher aide to full-time 611 teacher aide, effective November 10th, 2022. Motion by Peter, second. Second by Dan. Any questions or concerns?
I was just curious, so she's going from full-time to part-time?
And moving out.
Michelle.
And moving out of the 611, right?
So she's moving out of full-time 611 to part-time?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, that's what it appears to be. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. And we have a building use request. Entertain a motion to approve the building use request from the Salem Youth Wrestling for the primary gym and cafeteria, one evening a week, starting in December through mid-February. Sure, this is on file. Motion by Heidi, second by Peter. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. We have a transportation bid. Entertained a motion to accept the financial bid from Leonard Bus Sales Santander Bank for the lease of one 65 passenger bus, per vote of approval, for the five-year lease payment beginning December 30th, 2022, and ending August 15th, 2026, in the amount of $20,950 annually. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Andrea. Any discussion? Karen, is it unusual just to get the one bid or is that?
No, that's pretty much all we ever get.
Okay.
And just so you know, this is a late one. Normally, this would have been at the beginning of the school year, but because of the availability of the bus, it's just now available, will take possession early December, so.
Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertained a motion to adopt 2023 annual budget timeline, as presented. So, motion by Heidi, second by Andrea. And I see that you've added some, some different ways of getting information, yes.
So, we thought that instead of doing just the finance committee meetings for the next few months, since it's budget season, that we would do budget workshops with different stakeholder groups to make sure that we're getting everything in line so that our budget flows nicely.
Some of the, part of the rationale was that oftentimes, you know, when you have it as part of the regular meeting itself, it can turn into a very long meeting. You know, we want to encourage the public, you know, to be able to come and observe and, you know, and watch the work as well as, I think for all of us, be fresh for all of our business. And I think that was a practice in the past, to have board workshops. We did add three in there. So, I get, what I wanted to do was just make sure that you had an opportunity to look over the dates of those three workshops. The third one would be as needed.
The fourth one is as needed.
Oh, the fourth one, I apologize, yes, I got my numbers off. But I did want to make sure that those dates would, you know, work. It is a workshop versus, so a forum isn't needed, but I think, you know, we would really want the full board represented as much as possible.
And those are Monday nights, right?
Yes. We thought they were Monday, but if you would like to move them or, we just thought, having a little time between that, I think the other opportunity it provides is that if there is some additional information that we need or we want to have a discussion about, then we can bring that to the regular meeting, have a brief discussion, but not, you know, taken out, because, you know, to really do our proper work, it could take a bit of time in those first few meetings. So, you know, if the board is okay with that, that's, you know, we're recommending to go back to that.
I like the workshop where you just focus on the one thing. You don't have to do a lot of different things going through, yeah. So, you can keep your full attention to it.
We can always take a look at some of those future dates as we get closer if we need to, you know, move a day or two here and there, but at least I think this gives us something to.
How you do it on Mondays is a block out.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions or questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. So, we have a donation from the PTA. Entertained a motion to accept the donation by the PTA of a crash bar for the door of the building, donated to make the building code compliant. Someone closing by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Andrea.
Is it the little shed, the shed?
Oh, that is, okay. So, we actually need a certificate of occupancy for that. And in order to get that, we needed to have that crash bar.
Is it bigger than 10x10?
Uh, gosh.
What is a crash bar?
It's just, so that if someone were to be locked in, you can't get locked into it.
Oh, okay, that's good to know. I didn't understand what a crash bar was.
Yeah, it's like the indoor, it's like an inside handle.
Yeah, just, you know, where you push it, yeah, something like this or the other flat push.
Much faster to exit to do it.
Yes, yes. I hope that no one gets stuck in there, but just.
I've got this in the ocean a few times.
Right, we also have those in our storage, so, you know, we have those storage units, so. Those are all required.
It's like a freezer. Figure that out.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All the, motion carried five zero. And moving on to the discussion of the strategic planning. So, yes, I did share with you on the weekend update and, again, I'll have to refer to the dates in a minute on my phone, but I was able to, over the past few months of attending some various conferences, having the opportunity to hear some different presentations about strategic planning and the benefits of strategic planning. I just thought that this was an opportunity to bring it to the board. I think the timing is good timing for us to consider that. As I know some of you were on my interview, and that's something that I spoke about, is that I feel strongly that we should take a fresh look at our mission statement, our, our vision statement and really kind of looking at our values. And as part of that process then, would it be having feedback from the stakeholder groups, which really would then inform our district goals. And there were kind of the common recommendation in districts that are successful with strategic planning. Really, the recommendation is every three to five years, most districts do it five years. You really should be taking a look at your, your vision, your mission, your goals, you know, and really, you know, helping to focus your work. I think that for us, I think that would help us really, we have a lot, I think, of expressed work that we want to do in the district, but I think it's important to be able to appropriately prioritize and make sure that we're spending our money wisely, especially, I think, you know, in the next few years. And so, there are a variety of different types of consultant groups that you can go through. So, NISBA does kind of provide that, some of those workshops in part, so they're, it's not a great way to say, but piecemeal in a way, right? There might be different presenters to do different components. Whereas going with a consultant, so the consultant group that I think really would work for us, some of them is very, they're very, it's very extensive work and maybe a little more appropriate for larger districts. And then again, some of them are just in part, in parcel, but not necessarily flows together seamlessly. And I think for us being small, having new administrators, having new board members, it would be helpful, I think, to have someone guide us through the process. So, this group is through NISCUS, which is the New York State Council of School Superintendents. They work, so NISCUS and NISBA work together quite often in different works and initiatives. And I shared the link with you, it's called Blueprint for Excellence. There are two current superintendents that do this consultant work on the side. So, they're, they're familiar with kind of current process and current systems. They use a survey tool called Thought Exchange. It is, it's much more interactive for the user and gives us much, it will give us very good detail in terms of, for example, sometimes you might hear, oh, a lot of people feel strongly about issue A. It really gives you a good sense, as well as the survey takers, about how many people are feeling strongly about survey A. You can see that in real, I mean, issue A, you can see that in real time. But I, I think, you know, really what I'm proposing is that the board consider a presentation and really kind of have the opportunity to ask questions. And I know we've kind of dabbled in some of these discussions, but haven't really talked about a formal process for it. And I thought before I try to attempt to survey people, you know, if this is direction we want to go, I think it would definitely be more holistic and more probably significant in terms of reliability of the data and information. So, I did share with you some possible dates that were available. We could do it in a variety of settings, so there are different ways you can go about it. So, as the board considers how they might do their work, you can do it as a board retreat, which is more of a closed setting. You can do it as a board workshop, so the public could be present and hear the presentation. I like that idea because I think this would involve the public and our stakeholder group. And, you know, if there's an opportunity for people to, you know, be able to listen and understand that. This group, the cost for this year is around, I think, on their, on their webpage, it's about $15,000. It is aidable, so, you know, our, with our aid ratio, we would get a significant amount back if we chose to go that route. Karen McGregor and I have sat down and also looked at the fact that it, some school districts are using some of their ARP money for some strategic planning, and we feel there's an opportunity to possibly go that route as well. So, we have options that it is doable for us. And I just, my thought is, is if this is the route we want to go, the timeline might work nicely where they said, you know, once we kind of get some of our budget work done, and he can explain the timeline a little better, but you would, we would have the opportunity to possibly get started with, with just some of the board, kind of talking to the board and getting the board's direction on this, doing some of the survey and the work, and possibly having some goals set, so our mission, our vision done, and some goals set by the end of the school year, which really would give us the opportunity, as opposed to waiting until August or September, to be setting our goals and then give the buildings and those, you know, building groups having kind of the opportunity to do work of how they might accomplish that. You really don't get started until November, December. So, the timeline works in this sense. It's just, you know, whether or not the board would want to take the opportunity to go through this now or put that on for a future item, so.
I'm ready to do a presentation. Can we pick a date and do it?
I did, I can share the dates with you again.
November 30th, December 1st, December 5th or December 12th?
Did you repeat those?
Yeah. November 30th, December 1st, December 5th or December 12th?
And he could do it at, it would be 6:00 PM and most likely he would do it, we would do it in the DL room because he would do it through a Zoom. And then obviously, they would come out in person at some, at certain points during the process. But he is there, he is working actively.
December 5th does not work for me, but many of the other dates is fine.
Actually, the dates are all good for you, so.
Better plan for it, I think.
Andrea, can you see the game schedule?
Um, well, I'm hoping we're still playing football, so I'm not worried about that yet. So, I'm going to go with that, will all work, fine with me. I just, the 30th or the 1st would be better.
Okay.
I think any of those work.
Yeah, I think the sooner the better and then kind of there's some time to kind of sort, sort through it. So, go with the 30th and then if he says there's an issue with that first. Okay. So, like, that works for people?
Yeah.
And that would get us. There is boys varsity basketball at King's School that night.
There will be. Yeah. Mark already told me he's pushing those games back. The first game for them is going to be not until coaches versus game three.
Okay.
So, I don't think I have to worry about that.
Okay. So, we'll go with the 30th. And then 12th one is a backup. I was emailing with him today and I told him I'd let him know, so I should be able to reach out to him tomorrow and then I'll confirm with you on my, my update. And we'll do it as a workshop, so it won't be noticed, so that. Yep. Board workshop, board workshop.
Say six.
6:00 PM. And he said it would probably take no more than, he said his presentation itself maybe would take 30 minutes, so it's just really how many questions you might have and. Sounds good. Thank you. The next item, it still is a discussion item, a therapy dog, but we're going to put that on the December agenda for action. And then opportunities for the board to be heard. Julie and I had an opportunity to attend the NISBA convention. Marlee Matlin was our keynote speaker and she was amazing to, to watch here, here, through her interpreter. And she had a really, she told a little bit about how she grew up and some of the barriers that were in place for her, but how, you know, her parents just didn't buy into the fact that those barriers should encompass her. And she, she had some really good mentors, including. Henry Winkler, as someone said, yes. Yes, so, and, you know, she was just encouraging people to not see these things as barriers, but just different ways of, you know, communicating differently. And it was, you know, it was a really very, you know, kind of uplifting, affirming speech to hear. And then it was in actually two locations, I pretty much think, it's needed in one location, it's a little. They had a hard time, they didn't have any transport over. And that was a barrier, really, they didn't break down. You know, so, and I'm doing better now, but anyhow, so, but I did five different workshops and one of the things that did go with the strategic planning was reviving the district's brand post-COVID. And I found that to be really interesting because a lot of it was about the communication and what kind of communications you use and how they were used during COVID and whether that's still a valid way to use some of those and how you want people to perceive you and you don't want to, you know, so it was really very interesting to listen to some of those things and helped me to understand the process a little bit better. I did go to the, when it was titled, the Uvalde Brief. It was about school safety and there was a SWAT police officer who was talking about some of the things, some of the breakdowns and some of the things that had happened in Uvalde and some of the things that we need to be mindful of, you know, when we're talking about school safety. And it was sort of a real punch right in the soul of Flexus because he did not lay punches about how bad it can be. Community schools, and again, the strategic planning piece would come in here. It's how it, some of this, not just education, but wellness and the access to food and in different health services and mental health services and just how it's, it's really, you know, how different schools create this process and how effective they can be. And then the last one was, future-ready schools need future-ready boards, so I better get my act together. Technology, I started putting my calendar on my phone.
Go, yeah.
Small steps.
Baby steps.
Baby, baby steps.
I do still have issues with this calendar, I still carry a paper one. I like to look at the entire month at once and with that, you just can't, it just doesn't, it's not visually.
I know, I'm having, I am trying, I'm trying, no.
So, I have it on there, but I also have a paper copy.
But it had other things as well, is how, you know, we really have to plan and offer the educational opportunities for jobs that don't exist yet. Because the students that we will be sending out, you know, into, into the world will be doing jobs that I have no conception of. So, I mean, talking about skills and how really it's, reading, writing and arithmetic was for the schools that had no textbooks, but now we're really talking about how people process information and thoughts and how they learn and how they, the skills they need.
You can get paid to play video games now, remember that was already going to be a thing.
It's a score. Yeah, so it was just, it was just kind of interesting just to take your focus and really where.
just to take your focus and really where, where you're going to be. It's, it's not, they're not, I'm not preparing kids for the world that I grew up in.
Yeah, I know.
That shouldn't happen. But it was interesting. So you had different, you went in a whole different route, so.
Yes, yes. So as I discussed, so strategic planning. And went to a legal session and negotiations. So we do have contract negotiations coming up. So just wanted to brush up. I think it was a different law firm than we have. And I, so I like to take the opportunities to really just hear different perspectives and different, you know, kind of sense of what some of the current and upcoming, I think, considerations are when, when you're bargaining. So, so that was quite interesting. Yeah, I think that pretty much covers, covers, you know, what, what we were doing. Yeah, we, we were busy.
It was busy.
It was, it was pretty quick.
And they didn't, you know, you just, they, they moved you from one to the next, to the next. And they did have a large area for an expo. And one of the things, and we didn't spend a lot of time in the expo, but we actually had an opportunity to talk to somebody from the Thomas Bus Company. He had an electric bus there. And it was interesting to have a conversation with him about how that bus operates and what its history is and what it, what it requires and basically how much it costs too. I mean, there are a lot of things to consider. And as far as we need to be thinking about, you know, we have a mandate that tells us that, you know, we're going to have to be moving to these electric buses. And, you know, we just, we're going to have to be mindful of how we're going to plan for, for that. And whether we want to be on the front end or the latter end.
Well, we need to think about what we have for power and order to get charged out of those. Is that something we're thinking about going forward? Is we're going to have to update a lot of service?
And also, where we are, our buses go a lot further than, oh, and I, I've heard horror stories about people with just electric cars that are having to charge them just to get from Albany and back. Like, I can't imagine what it's like for, I mean, we're, we travel a fairly big distance with our buses, so.
And that, that's part of the conversation is that you can get a bus to one, to a location, but you can't necessarily get it back without charging. And they will do a survey. They will come out and do a survey of what your routes are. And it may require some adjustment of your routes, but they will tell you worst-case scenario, you know, this bus is, you know, it will only go so far, but, you know, they factor it in later in the roads and whatnot. But we're going to, but the bottom line is we're going to need more buses.
We're going to need more buses. And you're not going to be carrying backup batteries on every bus.
Well, the batteries. Yeah. You gotta have a bus.
And, yeah, it's, really the batteries they have been finding are not necessarily the issue. It's the charging elements. You know, how is that going to work? So if Lake, you know, if, you know, North Warren or, you know, Bolton or somebody comes down here, we go up there. So then how does that work, the whole exchange of charging? And, you know, one of my questions is, in addition, the governor has, you know, the mandate for personal vehicles in terms of after, I'm not sure of the date, but it's mid-2020s that there's no longer can purchase a gas-powered vehicle. So, you know, how do we then have the infrastructure with our limitations of capital projects in the future to not only charge our buses, but all of our.
Everyone's vehicles that are.
Everyone's, all of our employees' vehicles.
Some of it's, like, that we don't have it.
Some of it to drive an hour to work every day or 45 minutes to get here. But as a matter of fact, and I usually like to wait and share after just in case something gets changed in the moment. But tomorrow Karen and Joe Wilber and I have a meeting with two, with some various people who are related to the electric bus movement in terms of looking, starting to take a look at our infrastructure and kind of what we would, what we would need and the cost of that and those types of things. So, you know, I, I think obviously this will be, there'll be a lot of future discussion as we move forward. My sense initially is that I'm not, I, I wouldn't encourage us rushing into this. You know, I think there's a lot to be learned by other districts. I think Bethlehem is, and maybe there's another down in the Capitol region. There's another district that's going heavy into it, but Bethlehem has quite a few buses in their fleet now. And some, some of these larger districts are going to try to convert to a full fleet in a relatively short time. But I, I think we've got a lot to learn and to, you know, consider so that we can do it properly. And so I think there's something to be said to kind of sitting back and, and learning a little bit more about it and observing some of the.
Yeah. If that don't happen, then the power goes out.
But as far as building that plan, we don't have to start driving the buses on that year. We just can't purchase any more gas-powered ones. So the ones that we're leasing. So if we are early in our leases on the buses, we don't have to switch everything over at that, that time. We just cannot, the next one would have to be electric. So we, we just have to position ourselves.
To maybe do one more, we would want to start, we want to be looking at maximizing our opportunity, in my opinion. Again, if we can spread this out a little bit and, and learn some things, or maybe the technology will be more improved along the way, is the opportunity to have a solid fleet already without having to be in a time crunch to, because we have to person, purchase an electric bus. They are almost, right now, currently, right now, are close to 500, they're 460,000-ish. You know, so you're, right now, and about half a million dollars right now. So in five years, what is that going to equate to? And, you know, if you have a fleet of, right now, I think, what do we have, 11, how many, we have 10 or 11 buses? 12 buses, okay, 12 buses now with this, this one. And so, but that's what you have, right? And do you need a couple extra because of that charging piece? So if you're talking 14 buses, that's $7 million.
Well, and to mention what we're going to have to do. That's, I mean, learning what we have to do infrastructure-wise and being able to have all those charging stations and have all this stuff, I mean, that's probably going to cost us a pretty penny too.
It's going to be huge. And because, you know, they say the buses, it takes a long time for them to charge. So we've got our 12 buses hooked up. And then you got to store them inside because the cold's going to drain the battery. Then you got a bus from Lake George. Well, you got to have two or three extra charging stations that's capable.
Outside or do that.
To do that, I mean, you were talking.
You're talking a lot of power for a small town.
A lot of power and storage space. It's going to be huge.
Because we don't store all of our buses inside.
No, we don't have to now, but we will have to.
So, you know, I think it's going to, there, there will be a lot of factors to consider.
A lot of factors.
This was a topic last week at our CSO meeting.
I think tomorrow will be interesting.
Well, I think the state's going to have to come in with some.
They have no answers.
In order to be able to do this. I mean, you can't pass something and say, okay.
You can't.
You're going to do this and everybody's going to drown. Like, I mean, they got to figure out some kind of.
It's an unfounded mandate at this point.
They're notorious for it, absolutely notorious for it. Not only in schools, but in.
They're going to bury schools, that kind of.
But we actually have to have a transformer. The only good thing about it is we're really close to NISAG's transformer. So we have to have a long-winded track.
But still, I mean, can NISAG support all of that?
There's that. But I mean, we still, not only, we can't just draw from that transformer. We actually physically have to have a transformer on. So we have to, as far as capital projects or work would be done, you know, there, there are so many different moving parts that we have in, there's a jet, so.
Gym class is only stationary bikes that are.
There you go. Right.
Young kids, old.
Monsters Inc.
That, that's a topic.
Right, right. So that was interesting. It was lucky that we had good timing. There wasn't a big rush over there at the electric bus. So we, we had a good conversation.
We did, we did. So it was, it was very interesting. And it's, the bus looked beautiful.
Oh, I'm sure it is.
And not to change the subject.
No, let's.
Gina brought this up to me, is in the past, we've had a Christmas breakfast, which we have not been able to have in the last couple of years, last three years, I believe, for staff. Is, is it time to shake the dust off of that and put it back on the calendar? It's typically the last day of, just before Christmas break. So that would make it what, the 20th, Thursday, 22nd? The board gets together really early in the morning.
Yeah, I was going to say, tell them the whole story.
Really early.
Yes, and sometimes pancake batter goes flying everywhere around. And like, you know, it's just.
But Mrs. Carey is kind of very, very.
She's very patient.
She doesn't say a word.
She doesn't, she just shakes her head and keeps going. You got to remember to put the liquid in before you turn the mixer on.
And set the timer for the sausages. Don't burn them.
We have a problem with that. Done that before too. It's not our forte.
Oh, don't, yeah, I mean, I would love to do it. I'm up in the air right now, just hoping to hear about some stuff for Finn, but yes, if I'm able to.
Had somebody do that for you? Dan, were you able to do that?
Nope.
At any time? Just canceled that first year.
And our administrators join.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yes. So just so you know, it's a, an administrator's joint in. I, I don't think we include that in the interview process.
I could. Now, so.
And that's the 22nd, you had those good criteria?
Yeah, so it's, it's the morning before the. Yeah, and usually, I mean, they're done by 7:30, 7:30.
As far as marking it? No, no, inviting them. Oh, volunteers? Did they do volunteers in the past or was it just the?
Just the kitchen help, I think.
No, as far as inviting them.
I know we invited retirees.
Or retirees.
Yeah, we sent out letters to retirees and I think just a staff email.
Yeah.
But.
The little cards go in everybody's mailbox. That's what it was.
Yeah, we have the cards. I have the tablet for the cards.
Okay, it just, I didn't know, like, you have some volunteers.
Well, it's your breakfast, right? Anyone.
No barrier?
Yeah, I mean, we could talk about, you know, maybe there's some people that we should be inviting that we have never invited before. We also have to make sure that we get enough syrup too. In the past, we've had a syrup run out.
Shortage.
So, yeah, we want to make sure there's no shortage. Can't have pancakes.
Please report back on how hard we're working at making this breakfast lovely.
All right, so we will put that on the calendar. So we will add that to our, our dates, so it'll be the 22nd. And we'll, we'll set up a little bit more detailed work list for.
Yes, yes, we can definitely work that out.
We'll check with Mrs. Carey.
She might want to come in and monitor us all.
She will.
She's always been very good about it.
She is. Are we on the dates to remember now?
Yes, you are. Okay, I just wanted to add, I'm going to send out a little information. I, I try not to overwhelm you unless it's an urgent matter with a lot of various emails and try to keep everything in that one update. So I will share with you at the end of the week. But I just want to mention that the Rural Schools Association is having, and Ann and I wanted to go to their breakfast and listen, but they got sold out, so we couldn't get tickets. And, but they are going to be here and have a conference locally on December 1st and 2nd at the Marriott, Courtyard Marriott in Saratoga. So I am registering to attend. I will send you the agenda. It's a nice, I think, a very productive agenda. And as I mentioned previously, I had the opportunity at one of my conferences, I believe it was at NISCUS, to attend a presentation. And it's very informative. I think I'm looking forward to this. I think there's a lot of very relevant information that for small schools, small rural schools like ours. So if you would like to attend, I will be attending. I'll send that to you. Take a look at it. I'm having a hard time myself registering. I sent an email to Gina to say, help me figure out how to register. So if you would like to register, Gina will, will set you up and register. The first day, on the first, it's, it's only an afternoon. So I think it's a 1 to 6:00. And then on Friday, it's maybe an 8 to 3:00 type of a thing. So all that information, the information, the agenda, the speakers, the commissioner of education will be there as well as some other presenters. So I did, that's not on there, but that's the first and the second. I'll send that information out to you.
Looks like a busy, busy time for, for the holidays.
Holidays.
And any other additional items to, to share? All right, at this point, I'd like to open the meeting back up for any public comment, questions or concerns. Little big crowd tonight, yeah. But thank you for attending. It's always good to have someone here. All right, and at this point, entertain a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussions involving proposed pending or current litigation and collective negotiations pursuant to Article 4. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by rating here. Motion carried five zero.
No, no action.
No, no action anticipated.